You ready? All right, let's look to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call please.
Justice Trombley.
Here.
Justice Trombley.
Uh, here.
Justice Trombley.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. Um, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of January thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry. It's fine. Um, discussion, corrections. Look good for everyone?
Mm-hmm.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the meeting on January twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Salute.
Good second, thank you. Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstate too, sorry.
Yes. Presentation, petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community.
One's on his way. Can we come back to him when he comes?
Sure, sure.
Sorry, the driveway was sheer ice, it was putting salt on.
All right, that's, that's fine, that's fine. I did get a message from an equal page that David's not feeling well tonight, so he could not be able to be here, but he will come next month. Um, we have the report from the code enforcement officer. I think you all got that.
So what is our code exactly for dilapidated junk?
Good evening.
Evening. Have, have a seat, we're gonna come right back to you. Uh, it, it depends on what you mean by dilapidated junk.
Like broken stuff in yards accumulated.
That's just junk.
That's just junk.
Junk.
Yeah. I don't think it's very specific, but I shouldn't speak formally about that without, without looking at it, but I, I don't think we have. There's discretionary funds.
Okay. No longer functioning, broken, caved in, garbage.
I mean, it's.
There is something.
Did you ever, was there a read? There's even specifics about the time you're supposed to put your garbage cans out to the road.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, oh yeah.
You're not even supposed to stay out there. Yeah, there's a lot, and you'll see that.
Put mine out before I go over there.
Well, what, how about I get a copy of that?
That'd be great.
And it's certainly something we need to discuss.
Okay.
And I'll fill in all the boxes.
Yeah, 'cause a few places are just really looking.
Yeah.
A little crusty.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't help others who may be trying to sell their homes in the area when you drive around and see that.
Okay, I will definitely do that. If the board doesn't mind, we'll go back to Mr. Garrick here.
Oh, you guys already, you already said your pledge, or?
Yeah, yeah, we already started.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine, and, and so we knew that you were coming in, so the floor is yours.
Wonderful, well, thank you very much for letting me speak, um, here on behalf of the library. Again, uh, with some good news, I think, uh, just wanted to go over what we did last year. Lot of events, it was a very busy year for the Champlain Memorial Library. Um, we had two paint and sips, I think we call them paint and socialize now. Uh, we don't sip. Anyway, uh, two paint and socialize that we use not only as community events, but also as a fundraiser for us. Uh, we had snow days at the library where the kids come in and, uh, we have activities for them, uh, throughout the holiday week, President's Week. Last year, we started pie day, uh, so for March fourteenth, for those of you that are math geeks a little bit, three point one four. Um, so we, we had pie day where there were activities around that.
Pie, and the good stuff.
Yeah, and we do pie, we do have food to eat. And so I'm gonna put a plug in, um, and I'll talk about this year's activities in a moment. But, uh, yeah, uh, something unique, we've seen it in other libraries and we thought we'd give it a go, first year. You know, these things serve slow, but, uh, the people that, that attended had a good time, and so you'll see that coming around. We also had a women's history tea where we served, uh, tea and.
Crumpets.
Crumpets, yeah, tea and crumpets, uh, finger foods, and we, uh, had people either reenact or tell, tell about a woman in history, typically from the local area. So something new, again, something we hadn't done in the past. Uh, we did have.
Turnouts, so that was really.
Yeah, yeah, pictures with the Easter Bunny, that was another fundraiser for us and, um, went over very well. Of course, we, uh, participated in the Village Fest, uh, we were down there for that. The trunk or treat, unfortunately, due to the weather, did not make it this past year terribly successfully, but we have done that in the past. And, uh, of course, we always have the story hour, which is every third Saturday, hosted by one of our, our board members. So, uh, a very, very good year. And, uh, as we look forward to twenty twenty, some of the things, Snow Days is coming back here in about a week. Uh, so we'll have games and story hours and crafts and things like that. Pie Day is also coming back. Women's History Tea is coming back, and I'll give you this to put in the notes, uh, that you can add in for the events. Uh, the Easter Bunny is coming back and, uh, for, for photos with their children. We did consider having pets with the Easter Bunny. Um, but, uh, we weren't sure how the various animals might interact with one another or the humans around them. So we kind of stepped away from pets, uh, pictures with pets and your, and, and the Easter Bunny. Uh, in fairness to the poor Easter Bunny as well, right? New this year, we're adding in spring fever at the library, so there'll be activities during spring break. So, uh, we'll be able to get outside, I think, a little bit more with that one, hopefully, if the weather cooperates, we'll see, you never know. Um, and then we're also, uh, we have cleanup days at the library, we're gonna have one in the spring. Uh, sometimes it gets a little more difficult in the fall trying to get everybody's schedules coordinated with school activities, you know, the outdoor activities. So a, a spring cleanup day where, uh, typically the, uh, the board members and then community members can come in and help us kind of spruce up the landscaping, clean the shelves, you know, just stuff like that. So we take advantage of whatever volunteer time we can get from folks. Of course, we'll be at the Village Fest and the, and the appreciation picnic up here at the Champlain Telephone. Story hours will continue, and new this year, uh, the C E F team has a, uh, traveling salmon disp- display that will be at the library, uh, for a couple of weeks. We're gonna get some virtual goggles, we're gonna try some of that, they're getting, they'll be rotating, not something we're purchasing, but we're gonna try it out to see what that does. And then, of course, we're working on what's called a tech night where we'll, we'll have kind of experts on staff and people that maybe aren't quite as tech savvy can come in and learn about how to use their smartphone or their tablet or a P C or something like that. Um, and then we're also looking to schedule a trivia night, of course. So for those of you that would like to try your hand at a little trivial pursuit in a group setting, uh, we'll have something like that coming up. Um, you know, as always, I want to thank the board for their continued support of the library. Last year, you gave us an additional five hundred dollars. I know this year there are a lot of challenges, a lot of headwinds in the entire area, right? We have the, we have the firemen's, uh, I mean, the fire district, uh, is putting on a, a rec room, not a rec room, I'm sorry. An additional space, uh, for their equipment as well as a community room. We have the N C C S that just put up a, a bond for a very large capital project. Uh, but as you all know, uh, the costs of everything do tend to go up. And, uh, you know, with the increase in minimum wage impacting how we have to compensate our subs and things like that, I would ask respectfully that you consider an increase of whatever amount you can possibly find in the budget to help us to continue to, um, provide the events that we're providing. Uh, one of the things that we did have to purchase this year, and we've planned for this, is, uh, some new computers because the operating system in the seven is no longer supported and, um, they are rather outdated at this point. So we are having to get a couple of those to, uh, to replace others. With the census coming only being, uh, electronic this year, we envision an, an influx of, um, patrons coming in to fill out their, their census at the library, so making sure we have the equipment in order to, uh, to accommodate them. So I will open it up to any questions you may have, and then I'll get out of your hair.
Can you go back to the, the C E F, what was that about again, the C E F coming with a salmon display or something?
Yes, there's a salmon display, apparently this is the year of the salmon, who knew it, right? Um, so yes, there, it's a traveling display that's going through the three counties. And, uh, I'm not sure the timing of when we have it exactly, but it will be public on our webpage, uh, our Facebook page. And, um, so it'll go over the, kind of the, uh, the, uh, the environmental side of, of salmon in the area, kind of the impact it's had on our economy, you know, the, the fishing, all of that, as well as. Uh, it's, it's just kind of an educational display that we bring around.
They have big boards like about this side that they set up that has pictures and information about sort of processing of salmon.
It sounded interesting, it was.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, there's some really neat stuff. Uh, we, we have been coordinating more with the C E F team, um, things that have worked for other libraries. So we're looking for, you know, different ideas, we're certainly, uh, not the experts in library, uh, patronage and, and things to do. So we, we've taken ideas, the best ideas that we've found that work for us from other libraries, like the teas and the pie day and things like that. And, uh, we're implementing them here. So always open to new suggestions on what we can do differently or better uh, and kind of rotate it through, so it's not the same old thing every single year, every single month, that sort of thing. But, uh, we, last year, we had some major fundraisers, I will go into that very quickly, I told you about the paint and socializes that we had. Uh, we also had the Easter Bunny, uh, we ran some raffles, uh, as well. And then we, we have a Christmas, a pre-Christmas, we can bring in your old, um, decorations and then we recycle and raise money on that. So overall, uh, you know, if you put it all together, it, it's about eleven to twelve hundred dollars we've raised to help, uh, fund some of the things that we do at the library as well. So not just going out with a, with a hand, you know, looking for a handout, we are helping ourselves as well.
Okay. You, you were saying earlier, not tonight, but that you've had a decrease in funding from other sources?
Yeah, so, so one of the things that we've run into, Betty Little is retired or on her way right at the end of the year. And one of the things that she was very instrumental in was, uh, she was a heavy supporter of the libraries in the area. And so where, whenever she could identify discretionary funds within her budget, she would earmark some of it for the libraries this past year. And it really depends on what the budget looks like at the state level as to what she gets for discretionary funds. Unfortunately, now that she's in the minority, she doesn't get as much, right? It's, it's proportional and all of that. But anyway, um, so this year, we did not get, uh, as big a funding, um, uh, grant from her that we have in the past. In the past, we've gotten like twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, this past year, I think we got five hundred. So a significant drop off, so we anticipate whoever her replacement is kind of doing an outreach to them to make sure, hey, don't forget about us. Uh, Betty took good care of us and we're hoping that whoever is elected into that position does the same.
And when do you think your computers will be up? Because this does get posted for the community, so they know that they'd have that available to do the census?
Allison just shared with me that they were ordered, so they should be in within the week.
Okay. Well, thank you for all you've done.
No, it's not me, right, it's the board.
No, no, to the entire board, I'm just saying, I, I, you know, I've been, I've been very impressed, I know how hard it is to organize things, believe me. Yeah, it's great. I think the Champlain Library has a really good reputation now.
Yeah, oh, I know, you know what, I didn't mention, we did a library crawl, and we're gonna do one again this year.
I meant to tell you that.
I'm so sorry, yes, we did a library crawl, you know, for any of you that may have remembered your younger days when you did pub crawls. Uh, or maybe you do them now, I don't know, but anyway, um.
No, it's too dangerous.
Yeah, well, if you walk them, it's a little bit safer, but anyway.
Too far, too far.
Now they are. Um, go to Dublin, they're like every other, every other building.
It's easy there.
But, uh, we did a library crawl where we coordinated with not only libraries within our county, right? But also across the pond, uh, we went into St. Alvin's and I believe, no, Swanton, uh, and then South Hero. Uh, one of the heroes, uh, joined us as well. And what a great experience, people came into the library to stamp a passport and then they were able to, if they stamped so many libraries, then they could put it in a big drawing within, so, uh, and it was actually the Champlain Group, uh, one of our board members, Allison Harrell, that thought of this and coordinated it, and it was very, very successful.
Yeah, but a lot of people came over from Vermont, and I stopped in and tried a few kids.
I think more libraries, well, in three counties.
Yeah, it's cool.
Yeah, very exciting stuff, so, I mean, unique, different stuff to try and get people to come in and go, hey, this isn't the same library that I used to have. So, um, we are, we have redone the kids' area, so if you haven't seen it, stop in, it looks fabulous, it's complete now. And now we're working on kind of an adult area, while we'll bring in some comfortable chairs, uh, you know, some tables, uh, that sort of thing where you can get comfortable to maybe read a book, uh, and enjoy yourself at the library.
Great.
Awesome stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks to all of you for the hard work.
Wonderful. Um, so here are the upcoming events for anybody that wants to put that in the notes.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.
Thank you, Paul.
Do you post that on your Facebook page? I will, but I just did it.
Yeah, yes, Nikki and, and Allison and Allison do a great job of keeping our website up and up and running and things like that. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul, good night.
Have a good one.
Do the dishes.
This is only me, he's coming.
Do the dishes!
Uh, so back to the court, the code enforcement, or the code officers, what's the report, are there other comments on this, questions? Mike agreed to give it to us early, so if we did have questions, we could reach out to you, I don't know if any of you did.
I, I had requested that he give us some information on the Route Nine building that burned, it looks like it did somewhere.
Oh, it is a tear down.
It's what it looks like.
Yeah, and it said it was, it wasn't a complete loss, and I'm looking at it like, how's that not a complete loss?
Yeah, really.
The roof is caved, it's so sad, they were moving in that Friday, just like Kate's place that sold and they were moving in.
Yeah, very sad, very sad. Well, we'll, we'll have more information on that, I think it's all tied up with insurance.
Thank God, the insurance.
Well, I heard that, well, you heard a lot of rumors, I heard that was in question as well, but that's all I have, put in for information, but it, it sounds like he did.
Yeah, or I think, yeah.
It's gonna lose a lot, the asbestos removal, which always is a problem.
Yeah.
Well, this whole house is pretty, you don't get a fire.
Yeah. All right. Report from the mayor. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain February eleventh. We had quite a snowstorm this past Friday, which kept our D P W crew very busy for hours, keeping the streets and the sidewalks cleared. So we'd like to thank all of them for all of their long hours plowing and share that with them, all, all of you work so hard. Uh, much of my work in the past month, um, has been working on grants to fund important upgrades in the village. Allow me a few minutes to explain what I've been hoping to obtain. Uh, New York State is requiring that we install a disinfection system at the wastewater treatment plant by twenty twenty-three. This process means that we first have to have an engineering study for which we have received a grant of twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty. Once the study is complete, we will request a grant for the payment of the construction of the disinfection system. We are also well aware that several of our water lines need to be replaced, no surprise to anybody. Um, I have applied for a grant to take the first steps in getting this accomplished. And we should know very, very soon if this is going to be awarded. And after that, we can begin the longer process of finding money for the actual replacement.
Nice.
And finally, we, uh, really, really need a new snowplow. I've been working with USDA to fund a portion of this cost, which will be added to money that we have already set aside for the purchase. And I was assured that by mid-March, we will know whether we were awarded this, uh, this grant. Although we are a small municipality, we still have essential infrastructure and equipment that has to be maintained, repaired, or replaced. All of us are working for you, the citizens and taxpayers, to ensure that the Village of Champlain is a safe and affordable place to live. I will continue to look for ways to bring in grants, improve services, and create opportunities as we look toward the future. Together, we can move forward. Thank you. Report from the trustees, Amy, you wanna start?
Sure. Um, so I applied for the Stewart's grant with plenty of time, there was at least three hours before midnight when I submitted.
Congratulations.
It was good this year, I think last year was like five minutes away from midnight. Um, so, uh, actually, it was the whole day I had, it was plenty of time. So I, I looked at two options and I submitted two options, so this will be unique, 'cause normally I have a decision made. Um, but when I was, um, reviewing the stuff you'd sent me earlier and I sent out for quotes, I never got quotes back. Um, and I still to this day have not gotten quotes back.
Part of that's my fault.
No, they say they give you a quote response within twenty-four hours.
Well, someone did call from one of the companies and I was away.
Oh, was it compound?
Yes, and I did not return that call, so.
I was ready to write them a nasty letter.
Don't write them a nasty letter, it's my, it's, it's, it's partially my fault.
Oh, okay.
It's not yours at all, or theirs.
So that was for the obstacle, um, part, so, uh, then it would really focus in on the teenagers and that's what I said to Stewart's, that we wanted to hit, um, a little of the older kids and separate it from our main playground area over to, um, the, the other side of the park to garner more. So I found volleyball equipment and, because I was a volleyball player, you know, I know what to look for. Um, but to get better equipment that is going to sustain outdoor weather, it, it, that comes up to just under a thousand dollars, like nine seventy-nine, that was ordering balls, um, that we can sign out here, um, you know, and they can do it for extended time. So I figure if we have, you know, five balls, that's what I put into the grant, um, that people can loan out, especially if they have family coming in for a weekend event and they're gonna be picnicking down there, you know, take out a ball. And we can figure out how we wanted to loan out the equipment, so it does come back. Um, so that's the other option, is setting up a volleyball court near where we have the horseshoe pit, um, which would be nice. Uh, just a little bit more to add to it, um, Stewart's raised a lot of money again, so I'm hoping that asking for a little more again, um, will, will come to fruition. If not, I mean, we certainly have funding to supplement what they're willing to give us, if that's the way we go. They do have, uh, lower grade volleyball nets, but I'm thinking, um, they won't last.
You get what you pay for.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so went with models that were, were made for like beach volleyball play, but, you know, the water and salt and, but we just have cold weather, you know, but, um, we would take it down in the winter, would not stay up, uh, for the winter.
Winter volleyball.
Nice.
Winter volleyball, well, that would be very fun to do.
Yeah, volleyball in the snow is probably fun.
Especially right now, that'd be wicked fun, good challenge, good for your.
Good workout.
It would. It's like beach volleyball, right, dive into it, you know? Yeah, that'd be fun. So anyway, that's taken care of and we'll see that's awarded again mid-March, so we'll have answers on that.
All right, great. Anything else?
Nope, my other one is due February twelfth.
I thought it was fourteenth.
I looked tonight, I'm like, aw, crap. I'm from South Carolina, but it's Thursday morning, so. Turn out a bit late. Yes.
Tom?
Okay, uh, I too wanted to thank Lincoln Brew for doing a great job for that storm. It was a lot of snow, and it didn't stop. Um, and I wanted to announce I have a blood drive coming up February seventeenth from three to seven at the Catholic Men's Club, Catholic Women's Club. Any chance we could put that on the, uh, Facebook page?
I can do that.
It might help.
Yep.
Um, we've been drawn about twenty-three people, which is good.
Uh, the seventeenth?
Seventeenth from three to seven.
Okay.
And the water board has had two meetings. We did a kickoff meeting on January twenty-ninth on our birthday, Mike. And, uh, I think we're, I think we're moving forward nicely. Our second meeting was on February sixth, we brought in Juanita and Sarah and Julie. And, uh, our goal was to, uh, make sure we picked out all the metrics that we want data on and they're gonna be working on setting up some spreadsheets for us to send to us for our next meeting to start.
Great.
It's a start.
It's a good start.
It's a good start. It's a good start and, uh, I'm very impressed with the, with the whole board, so.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Okay, Nikki?
Hey, um, we just had another cooking class on February second, we had, uh, twenty kids attend.
That's great.
It was a big crowd. It was, it was well received. Um, we did veggie pinwheels this time.
Some of the kids didn't like it.
Most of them ate it while they made it. A couple of them did not like it, but they still made them and brought them home for any other family member, so, yeah, it was. Um, as Paul said, next week is winter break for the schools, so I'll be holding a few activities. Tuesday, the eighteenth, from one to three, I'll do a winter story hour, um, for the younger elementary kids at the library. Uh, Tuesday, weather permitting, we can go to the playground and do a, a play day, um, snow, snow play day. Or, um, go to the St. Mary's Hill and do some sledding. That same, sorry, that was Wednesday, the nineteenth. Wednesday, also, I'd like to hold a teen meetup, um, at the library for ages twelve and up. And then, you see what our response is, I'd like to set up a teen book club, um, do some kind of, uh, game nights or peer chats, you know, we just get together with the kids and let them talk with each other and get to know the community. Um, and see if we can do some kind of volunteer work with them.
That's great.
You know, kind of brainstorm some ideas of how to get them involved and have it, you know, have them active in the community. And then on Thursday, uh, I'm planning a game day, um, maybe one to three or two to four, haven't really decided yet. Um, and that's for all ages, we have plenty of bar games at the library, I've got a whole cabinet full also, which I, we did last year. Um, so there's plenty of space that will have a game at each table. Um, we did, last year's attraction was, uh, plastic cups and, um, cotton balls. So they built the cups up as a fort and they had two sides and the cotton balls were their snowballs, so. They enjoyed that the whole time, um, and Twister, Twister was the other game that they really enjoyed, so, yeah. Another fun week to keep the kids busy during break.
Thank you.
Yeah, so far, that's it.
Thanks for all you're doing with that.
No problem.
Kim?
Okay, um, so I got a quote or a semi-quote from Easy Docs of Vermont on the railing or curving that we want on the, um, the decking. Um, the company that Mike Morgan has been dealing with is at a boat show in Boston right now. So he says that he's been after them, um, he thinks once the boat show is done, that we'll get, I can get, you know, a quote in writing on that. But he gave me, um, their quote was twelve dollars and fifty cents per linear foot, so it's around five hundred dollars. He doesn't think it's going to be much different than that. Um, so as soon as that company is done, hopefully I'll have a, a better idea on that and we can move forward on that. Uh, the update was given to A A R P with pictures and copies of, um, the invoices for the kayak launch and the decking that was ordered, and, uh, they had a glitch with their system that was finally fixed. Um, I'm, no, I.
Wow.
Yeah, um, so I haven't heard anything about that, like gee, thanks for your response, we're glad.
So you heard nothing?
I haven't heard a thing. I know that it was submitted and I know that it said, you know, confirmation, it was submitted, so. Um, but before that, for like two weeks, I didn't even have an edit button, so, so that was submitted. Uh, you can't get a person to speak to, uh, A A R P, it, it just amazes me that as big as these community challenges are, you can't get a person, if it wasn't for me having that email from Laura Boss, I wouldn't have any kind of contact whatsoever. And she's been very, very helpful with things, so, um. We've, we've done what we needed to do, we've provided our update with approximate dates for completion. Haven't heard anything else, so just moving forward with completion of it in the spring. And then we can send some final pictures once it's all done.
Well, thank you for your persistence.
And also working with Modern Mechanical on getting, um, Tom and I spent some time there because he understands more of the logistics of.
He hasn't updated us since.
No.
And, I mean, he's doing this a lot in his own time, so I don't want him.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to fester him, but if you don't mind, can I bring up what he, he was concerned, Mike, that we build something strong enough, the, the foundation we could put in to hold this? He's just concerned it needs to be strong, it's a large lever out in a fast flowing river. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, in the spring, we'll have to get together with him and, uh, figure out how much concrete we're gonna pour. Figure out for him. Figure out for him. And the exact locations, we don't, you know, got a good idea where we're putting it, but that, that has to be done in the spring, once the water recedes a little bit. Any ice.
Know where we're putting it first, because that's, once you do that, you have to determine it.
Yep.
That's the biggest.
But he did, when we met with him, I wanted to bring that up too. I thought to tell you about it. He had concerns that were, I gave him a rough idea what I was looking at doing and he thought that was ample, but I said, we'll have to work those details out. I mean, I think it has to be a, a good sized foundation.
I'm sure when you get that out there, that curve, you get heavy rains by the current.
Yeah, so we're mounting, we're mounting the game weight to that. And then the game weight will be just chained off to the dock. The dock is gonna be held by spuds. But it's all kind of be pulling on the game weight. So he's just concerned. And I said, no, we plan on pouring.
I think when you put it, we can get there close enough at the back, but if we wait, say, or if we hold it, hold.
Where are you thinking of putting this?
On the left side of the boat launch.
Is there a more protected area that you could do it so you won't have that pulled?
Not really.
I don't think so either.
River flows downhill, so it may do get heavy rains, current, like, I mean, it changes quickly.
So we'll really need to have those stabilizer bars.
The, the foundation needs to be good. John's building it to handle the, the weight, you know, the force. He just wants to make sure we, we put it. And I said, don't worry, we will and we'll get him involved when we get ready to do it.
Well, and him and his wife are also kayakers, so.
We're not gonna put this in, in early spring anyway, because we're not gonna want anyone to attempt to go on the river.
Right.
No, no, not early.
Well, it's probably gonna be May, mid-May before we can even start.
Right.
Construction.
At least because usually during beginning of May, walleye season, a lot of times we've got one dock up on the land for people to use to launch their boats. It's, that's all flooded.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it could even be Memorial Day before we get, we get at the construction. But when, when that time does break, we'll have to be prepared to get after it because we're trying to give them a deadline on the, on the grant side.
Yeah, well, well, I'm gonna leave it as, I'm not gonna poke the bear if they haven't come back and asked for more information.
Right.
I'm going to assume that everything's status quo and they were happy with what I sent them and they haven't come back asking any questions on what was submitted, so.
I highly doubt they would. I mean, because it's all in place, stuff happens that delays.
Exactly, I mean, they've gotten, they've gotten pictures, they got a cop, a picture of the sign, they've got copies of the invoices, I, you know, told them we're working with a local fabricator. And if they have any clue of where we are, they're gonna know what the weather's like here, so.
They want, AARP wants a sign?
We have one.
We have a sign.
Announcing them, that they did this?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because I was thinking that I, I would really like us to see a thank you. I mean, Stuart's for how many years now has built this playground and our, our, our park? And, you know, to give some recognition because, you know, more people that go into Stuart's, especially during the holiday season throwing their money and they realize it's coming back to their community, oh yeah. You know, we need to put that in there. I mean, you go to Stuart's and you ask and they say, what do you need? I mean, it's never, it's not a no, the ice cream's there, you know? They're there and so for those people who are always stepping up the Dunkin' Donuts or whatever, you know, these events that make it there, this is our community and these are our businesses that, that every time, they're, they're right there and we should give them the plug where, where needed. Doesn't have to be anything tacky, but you know, just to, or even maybe a tag on our Facebook, because I know Facebook now, I'm a major player here.
Are you?
Yeah, I do it all the time.
Are you on Facebook?
Never been on Facebook.
I thought you were gonna go to the library class to learn how to do that.
I don't, I just don't.
She's, she's like, she's like me, it takes time.
I don't have time.
And when they do, when you do do it, it's like she did, I mean, it bails your time.
Yeah, certain connections I don't wanna make, so, um, yeah, I stay clear.
Well, is Stuart's on our sign that we have for the playground?
I believe so.
Okay, we'll look at that at the end of the meeting. Well, let's look and see. If not, we definitely need to give them some recognition. They've been very generous with us.
And then on, on the other side too, when we, when we finish the boat la, or the kayak launch, I do want something put up also recognizing Modern Mechanical's commitment to this and, and the work that they've done as well. And again, just another plug for a local business who's giving back to the community.
They'd probably wall the black on it.
What's that?
They probably wall his own black on it.
There you go.
She said it won't go away.
We should ask him to do that, that's, that's fine. And give us a, a plug.
Sorry to, to
That, that's fine.
Drag your, this out a little bit, but I meant to ask, did you find a good place to store the kayak, uh, launch itself?
Yes, I got under a snowbank right now.
Okay.
It's well protected, it works.
Tar, tarp it up?
Yeah, I wrapped it, I went to Tarpon, wrapped it, had it tarped.
Oh, it'll be fine like that.
Yeah.
It'll be fine like that. I took out all the instructions and Mary filed them, so it's just plastic left out there and that one.
Yeah. Anything else, Kim?
Uh, no, I still want to, in the spring, reach out to see if maybe we can get a company that would be willing to come in on weekends and maybe rent kayaks, just, you know, they could try it a couple of times. We used to have a kayak shop in Plattsburgh and it changed names and I see that that second one is closed as well, so I don't know if there's anyone local that's doing it, so.
Yeah, but they're at Bags Landing in the summer, so they're still operating that, that location on the, on the river, so it's the same group, I think.
Well, there was the kayak shack, the, yes, the kayak shack.
Yes, and they were using Bags Landing, which is on, it's on the Alsable.
Oh, okay.
As, as a rental, like what you're talking about, but maybe they would have a, you know, maybe they'd be willing to do something up here.
Cause I know over.
Well, especially if you promote it and, and that it's handicapped a festival, anyone can get into kayak, you know?
Yes, yes. Cause I know over in Vermont, they have the, the Mad River Boating Company or something like that, that when we go camping over at Sugar Ridge, we always see it.
Yep.
And they have a big teepee pool of kayaks and I think they go around and do that too, but that would probably be a ways for them to come. So, I still, I still wanna look into seeing if somebody would be interested in, you're trying to see.
Yeah, that'd be something that's good.
It'd be cool if we had our village host earlier to kick off the season with it and have them come in and rent. They'll have a food truck down there and you know, have to, like a little village picnic, just to kick off, you know, to come and see all the things, the volleyball nets up, the horseshoe pits going and just have a, a day of
We can do it.
All the stuff we're doing.
We, we only picked those days to try to tie it in with the
The telephone company.
The telephone company and.
Company, but I don't know if that really, that fits one or the other, does it?
Garage.
Nah, yeah, why don't we go back to
People kinda come up here and then they saunter down to us, you know?
To get the ice cream, it's like, why not spread it out? Why not give it a day of, you know, bring a dish, let's all have a picnic, everybody come together. You know, and we had some of the older guys that came and told their stories. That was so popular.
That was dope.
That was so phenomenal, you know, and we're losing these guys, you know, and telling our history. You know, if we do something like that, have the, the kayaks there, try out the launch, see how you feel, right? And, and even doing it, for those who are afraid to, to attempt it. I think it would be great.
Lunch day.
Lunch day.
Lunch day.
Lunch and lunch.
Lunch and lunch, perfect! That's it, do a Facebook up.
Somebody's, somebody's have to bring a bottle of champagne that Chris and the first guy.
Right!
I think Mickey's on that.
Lunch and lunch, I think that would be phenomenal.
I don't, I don't see why we can't explore that idea. We have time.
Right, do our, go back to doing our own village festival and it's just us, the village, not, you know, with everybody
It's up to the board, but.
Coming up, because then we never get to come up to the champagne thing or, you know, do the other stuff.
That's right.
Uh, cause it's all tied to the garage sale, it's just, you don't wanna be out on the streets, it's just crazy. It'd be better just to do our thing to pull the community together, see what we have and have it a combination between the playground and the new park. This is what we got for you folks.
Yeah, we could certainly try it.
We'd have, we'd have the longboats.
Yeah, we have the longboats, yeah, we are getting the longboats, I already agreed to that.
Are we getting the longboats again? So.
I mean, there would be plenty to do and plenty to promote.
And so people know that this stuff is all available, you know, even, even having some things in the house that you do with the kids, that, that they know that that's available. Although you don't do that in summer, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you do it in summer?
Yeah. You're thinking in July.
Just something different, yeah. Sometime in July to kick it off, so people know what we've got.
How, how do, how do the rest of you feel?
I think it's a great idea.
I've thought a long time about separating and having our own, having our own celebration.
Like we used to. Yeah.
Earlier.
Yeah, I'm in it. I don't like August.
I mean, I like August, but I just think earlier would bring more people in the village and it would bring more people using, using everything.
It would bring more people in. Kicks off the summer of using what we've got, yes, exactly.
Yeah. And then sometime after the Fourth of July, because Ross's point, that's their, that's their time.
Right. Absolutely. June thirtieth.
Oh, it's that early, is that how it falls? Okay. But mid-July.
June thirtieth, way good.
Yeah, we either have to do it then or, or earlier in June, but that's gonna be
And school doesn't even really get out until July.
Right.
That's not July.
Yeah.
We do it weekend after or something.
The weekend after.
Their, their celebration. Or two weeks after. We gotta keep it, we're gonna keep it earlier if we're gonna make it our
Yeah.
Launch.
Lunch and lunch.
Lunch and lunch.
Love it, what a great idea.
Lunch and lunch, I think that's a
Well, we're small enough that it's not hard to organize this kind of thing.
No.
It really isn't. So I guess what I'd say is bring your ideas to the next meeting and we'll do a little brainstorming and we can just pull it together. It's pretty easy to organize something like that.
Yeah.
Get some entertainment.
Yes, I think we can get some good entertainment.
Get their tracks back maybe.
I was just thinking that.
Well, that's the other grant I have to write, see if we can get the, the music back again too.
Oh yeah, I was, I wanted to ask her about that.
That's March.
Do we have a local food vendor, food truck that would be willing to set up?
Is it Julie? Maybe Bruce, would they come?
Maybe Bruce, yeah.
The, the grant, the Woods.
Who? Bruce Leclair maybe?
Robert Woods.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he'd probably, he'd probably come down.
What's that? We, we move on a food vendor.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Or two. But there are some really, really cool ones. I mean, there's a, someone that does maple stuff, there's, there's all different kinds of food vendors. We can have several.
Cool if we can get one of those beer trucks, you know, that have the, the different, because that'll draw people. They have to pay for that.
You mean the different crafts?
The different crafts, yeah.
And then if we had the Stuart's ice cream.
Well, we could do that. We could set tents similar to what you do for the farmer's market and invite like Bayshard Sugar House and all these people to come in.
She's talking about beer.
She's talking about beer.
Craft beer.
Oh, craft beer.
I'm not sure how we missed that.
Well, it's incredible.
I'm embarrassed.
We're talking about beer.
You do drink beer, right?
Oh, and craft beer as well.
I don't, I know, right, but I think that would be a draw when we're pulling people in, you know, the unique things for our community and there's enough of those people that go to the farmer's market that might be willing to come up to show their stuff, why not? Let them do their thing.
Have to check on that though, Bob, oh, hold on.
I know, probably, you have to get, don't we get it from you guys? Don't we get a permit from here?
Not, no.
What did we do for the bazaar? We had to get a permit.
You do have to get, you do have to get a permit.
No, we just, we just, we just put that, give them a letter saying that we know they're having the bazaar and that they're
Alcohol's gonna be served.
Alcohol is gonna be served.
Doesn't the state have a one day permit though that you can apply for?
For.
For alcohol?
Could I ask Laura, find out about Laura about that?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
Cause it's expensive.
There is something I had to do.
Yeah, I think Ross's point is that.
And if we had, had Stuart's, did the ice cream.
Right.
But there is a lot of liability in controlling the IDs and all that stuff.
It is, you know, we don't need that.
Controlling it and, well, that would be the
Think of a draw.
That would be the vendor's responsibility.
Right, not ours.
That came in.
They can get the permit, they could do whatever. You know, there's these, there's unique, they had a thing in West Shaysie this winter, like a, just before Christmas, like a craft thing.
Beer tasting maybe or?
And what?
Was like beer tasting or something?
Oh, no, it wasn't, there wasn't beer there, but they had the different crafts people.
She's shifting gears on again.
She is switching topics, Tom.
But they had the different artisans there, they had this guy that did, you know, like the dried meats, the different meats that were like incredible. He goes, I only do farmer's markets, you know, and it's like, bummer, cause it's really good stuff, it's like Polish sausages and unique things. So we get people with unique things that pull them down, other reasons there, but, you know, mainly to, you know, just community day, get people together.
You can get, if you're not gonna charge for vendors to come in, you're gonna get vendors, they'll, they'll come in and say, oh.
Yeah. Why, why would we charge?
We have to watch the date carefully, because there's so much going on. We don't wanna have a conflict with some big gathering in Plattsburgh.
Right.
Right, once you get into July, you have to be mindful of the, the Mayor's Cup and the Battle of Plattsburgh. And I don't know when all of that stuff takes place, cause I don't ever come to it, but.
Battle September.
September.
The Mayor's Cup is around the Based on his mid-July, yeah.
Right, on the fourth.
Is it the fourth? It's supposed to be July, I think it'd be fourth.
It's usually the first for a week.
Oh, okay, alright.
It's somewhere on the fourth of July.
Well, why don't we, bring your ideas to the next meeting?
Okay.
And, and we'll, we'll figure things out.
I think it shortened the Mayor's Cup last year.
Yeah, it is shorter now.
It's like three days, so.
Alright, good, sounds like fun. I love it. Alright. Report from the clerk treasurer.
Um, everyone has their expense and revenue reports for January. And I'm gonna ask that we do a transfer for one of our payroll accounts. Transfer from F eighty-three eighty-nine point four, other water expenses, fifteen thousand to F eighty-three forty point one, transmission and distribution.
Yeah, I don't have it.
It's on the, it's on your agenda.
I was looking for it.
I was looking for a shoot like that.
Me too.
Yeah, no, because I know that, that account is very low.
It's very low. We have a few that are a little, uh.
But, um, I'm not saying this is gonna last till the end of the year, but it's a start.
Make a motion to do that move, transfer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Don't call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
And now we have the warrant and we have additional invoices of five thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and twelve cents for a total warrant of forty-four thousand six sixty-two fifty-five. This warrant does include our insurance.
Yeah.
Or office cleaning one up, huh?
No, it's two months.
Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Someone?
Yeah, a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, questions?
What's the battery exchange, Mike?
Not exchange, battery. Bought a battery with exchange, but take the old, turn the old one in.
And what was the battery for, which?
Which, which one is this? For two of them?
Four hundred sixty-four towels.
For the Baco.
Some Cadillac of a battery here.
No, two batteries for the Baco.
Okay.
It says, when he writes it, it says battery with exchange, because we have to give the old ones.
Well, yeah, no, I know that, but I wanted to know
For the Baco.
What kind of battery this was, okay.
I think every battery we owned were dead.
Well, last two months, we went to like six batteries.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, rains of pours.
That's the blue one, the Baco's six years old already.
Shall we go into the discussion then?
Isn't that crazy?
On the, uh.
About building a hole in the leak.
Uh, let's, let's talk about it when we do the snowplow discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Other, other questions?
I, I just don't understand why we would pay sixteen cents on a bell. Two ninety.
Yeah, didn't we have four cents?
Yeah, we have four cents, yeah, um, yeah. It's interesting that the, um, Cook County has just signed on with Constellation as our energy supplier.
Have they? Yeah. Tell ya.
Any other questions? Discussion?
We're, we're tight in the general fund. We are tight.
Very tight folks.
I know.
I don't like being this tight. So don't ask for anything tonight, Mike. That's my prelude to.
I'll go home now.
Yeah, yeah, get anything tonight.
Um, send her there.
Oh no, can we add something?
Well, I mean, you wanna analyze it a bit, Amy?
It's not by choice.
I wonder who we're looking at.
We can certainly, uh, discuss what, what's us there.
Do I approve a warrant?
Yeah, I know, we still have that motion, but I just didn't know if there's any more discussion.
Oh, what Amy has specifically.
No, 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 I'm good. My, all my specifics are.
Okay. Okay, alright, roll call.
I'm not understanding what she's. Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Why, why are you thinking we're close?
In the general fund, overall. Because normally we're a little bit more of a cushion, you're not concerned that we're not going to, to make it.
So where, where are, are you?
Your main concern, yeah, because I.
Are you looking at, are you looking at a final percent, Amy?
Well, I looked at the final, but you know, as we're going through, there are several categories that were very tight. I mean, personnel is obviously one of them, but we, we knew. You know, the maintenance, street maintenance and all of that, we're, we're like way under, which just worries me, that's all. And then when you look at your, your total, where we're at, um, it's less than the, the third that we have still to go.
Well, you gotta realize we pay retirement, we pay workers' comp, we pay our insurance just once a year, so those come right off the top.
Yeah. And those have already come out, right? Yeah, all that insurance.
Yeah, yeah. The insurance is just coming out this time.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Um, actually, I kinda went through this and I really don't believe we're that bad. I realize that our streets, personal services are.
Yeah, those two are tight.
Yeah.
But now we have.
And they're our biggest categories.
But now some of it's going over to streets. I mean, over to snow because they're plowing.
Okay.
So there, there is a percentage over there that isn't used.
Well, it's just, you know, we have for the past several years had a, a little bit more of a cushion, that's all I'm saying. Well, we're, we're tighter than normal. Not panicking, it's just we're tighter than normal.
Well, we.
We also have one full, one, another employee that we didn't have, William Park. Last year we had Jimmy was out part of the year, so we still didn't have an employee all year.
I know we do.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
We were still down one. Now we're just, where we're.
Most of our storms seem to come on weekends.
Yeah.
Almost every weekend, but maybe last weekend, or the weekend before, we got a good weekend.
That's how it is here.
I mean.
It's always been.
Yeah, and then we've just had a couple of water main breaks that have taken hours.
I shouldn't have said that.
I'm sorry, but it's, you know, that's a major, it's a, it's very expensive. It's very expensive. We can't help that.
Yeah, that's uncontrollable.
But in trying to figure out for a new budget, like the wages, um, what our wages ended up at the end of two thousand nineteen and what we had budgeted, um, there was like roughly a twenty-one thousand dollars difference. Well, that twenty-one thousand dollar difference was actually what Jimmy would've got when he was off, so actually our wages were kind of on target. As for the distribution, that's gonna have to be worked out.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. So, not, not in the panic, I just.
No, no, I just. No, we're, yeah, but I agree. I mean, I'm watching it really carefully too. Uh, report from the superintendent, Mike.
Well, it's been mostly, uh, weather related these past months. It's not snow, it's ice, um, so that's kept us pretty busy. We did mix up the rest of our salt. We've got just a very little bit left for, uh, for our sidewalk machine, but we're on another loan probably this week. Other than that, we did have, uh, the night of the fire, the structure fire downtown, we did have, uh, two water main breaks. Well, a water main break, we, we broke in two spots, so that, uh.
Because of the fire? Cause of using the?
Drawing, yeah, so much draw. Sure, the, just the change in pressures in there, like. Other than that, we had, uh, we had fuel equipment issues, uh, at the wastewater plant. We got our clear, our drains plugged in a clarifier, uh, we had to pump a tank from one side to the other. We're gonna need, uh, we're gonna need to do some work in the clarifier to come this summer. Uh, they tightened the chains up, but chains are getting more bad. Um, while they're in there, they did de- grease the bearings and whatnot, but we've got some clogged wheels that are just, the bearings are shot, the shafts aren't even spinning, the, 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 um, gears are just turning on the, on the shaft, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to give it some attention. It's, I'm sure it's gonna be expensive to rebuild it, but we're gonna have to do it just like we did with the cross collectors, um, this, uh. Uh, I've been having a few issues too with, uh, the old probe and the new blowers. The blowers, uh, once in a while will trip out. Start back up, so I'm working on that, I'm working on that issue now. We have to do some reprogramming in the VFD, but it's still not a hundred percent. Um, same thing with water. We've had a few hiccups with our water system now and then. The alarm will call me. You get, you get an issue with the filtration and the plant shuts down, you gotta go down and reset it, so we're, uh, we're trying to figure out what's causing that issue. We do have to, we are gonna change all of our tubing, and we'll have a few fittings, and we'll probably have to change two for all of our, we got four chemical feeds, and all that, all that has to be changed. We're gonna get that done here, as soon as we can get caught up. Uh, monthly water readings, I did. There was quite a few high ones this time, went around to try to find out, um, issues. Spoke with people, uh, most, I think most of them, we took care of or, or found out what was going on. We had a, I had a few calls, I had to go out. Uh, people didn't have, um, had pressure issues, and, uh, had a few pressure reducers that went bad, that were sticking in the opening all the way. Um, so we've been changing those out. Other than that, we did, uh, some miscellaneous, our sewer jetter, uh, swivel on our sewer jetter, but the hose reel, uh, worn out, since nineteen seventy-five. So I got a, I had a spare jetter I got from parts from town of Plattsburgh, so I went and got that, got that in the shop. We were able to take the parts off that, it's just that swivel was like three or four hundred dollars. But I'm hoping to, I'm hoping that, it looks like the same pump that we have at ours, I'm hoping to be able to take the pump eventually, our, ours, we always gets pretty bad, so we're gonna use that for, uh, try to use that for parks to get ours, uh, up and going. Other than that, the backhoe, obviously, uh, batteries, um, our V plot, we did get the blades where that's up and going, we've been using that. But it's mostly been, uh, it's mostly been streets here for the last, uh, for the last month. Um, also, a few helpful reminders for the residents. I wanna remind residents not to leave your cars in the streets. If you see us cleaning the streets, please try to move your car. Um, some people will come out, see us, and we've got a few streets in particular parked on the side of the, on the side of the street. And I know they, they don't have parking, they have to park there, but if we're cleaning, instead of just leaving your car there, um, we've had some that are blocked in, they've been there for probably a month now, and then they, they come to see me today, want me to clean around their car, well, it's all slush and froze in, so. I asked, you know, I asked one of the people, I said, is that your car at all? Well, they come out, they, well, that's my car, you're gonna clean around it? Nope. You're gonna have to figure out what you gotta do, because I asked them and they just left it there, so it's been, probably been four or six weeks, froze in, they ain't having help, so. Anyways, a few other reminders, um, make sure you close the doors of your mailboxes. We've, uh, we've lost a few mailboxes. If the doors are left open, sometimes the slush will go in and take the box right off or rip the door off. When possible, try to clean the snow by your mailboxes. Um, what happens is, a lot of people don't clean the snow over their mailboxes, it gets driven on, builds up with ice. We come to plow, the wind hits that ice, jumps up, it'll knock the box off. Um, if you clean around your mailbox, we won't have to get close to it, and there's a lot less chance of it, uh, getting hit. Uh, we've got a few out there with, um, I think people are just waiting for us to hit them so we can replace them, but they're bungee corded to another mailbox or a piece of tie wire, uh, some are in pretty bad shape. Just hanging on, you know, waiting for, so.
Hoping you'll hit them.
Yeah, you know, and if it's a legitimate thing, fine, but we have some that.
Like you're waiting for your keys in the junk car.
Please take it.
We try to, uh, if we hit one, we try to go fix it, but we do have some that are, and you could probably blow on them with your breath and knock them over. Um, when we get a lot of heavy snow like this, we have to push the banks back so they don't freeze. Um, I get some calls with people complaining that, you know, they shovel their driveway and we come by and push the banks back, well, it locks the snow back in your driveway. I mean, the only thing I can suggest, if you're looking at your house from the street, on the right-hand side of your driveway, clean it back further. At least it has a place for the snow to go, we're not putting it back in your driveway. This way you won't have to shovel it once, not more than once. Um, I mean, we have to keep the streets open. I know it's frustrating, you get done shoveling your driveway, the plow comes by and fills the end of it up. But if you, if you do clean just before, you know, on the right-hand side looking at your house, it will, uh, it will save you a little bit of work. What I say about that, it is what it is. Yeah, but I get complaints. We got some today. The other thing I wanna mention is, a lot of times we plow the streets, um, I go back through wherever the pickup, and the people are out there blowing their snow in the road or pushing their snow in the road. You can't, you don't, don't, don't blow the snow in the road. Um, we see it with either plow trucks pushing in the road or, I've got some right here close by that take your snow blowing, blow it all in the road. Um, don't do that. Usually if you get, blow the snow in the road, it gets, you get it back, so, uh, best thing to do is don't blow it in the road. If you got any questions about it, you can call me here at the village office about any of these issues, and, uh, I'll be glad to go out and talk to you. Oh, yeah, there is one more thing also, garbage cans. Amy, listen to this one. Well, you said earlier you love your, leave your cans up.
I was.
Uh, don't put your trash cans on the edge of the road or in the sidewalk. Uh, we can't stop at every house and take the trash cans out when we're plowing. Um, it's not, it's just not feasible for us. I mean, shovel a spot on the edge of your property, put the cans there. I know, um, Mondays and Fridays here are the, are the prime pickup days for trash. Um, I mean, we try not to knock the cans over, but we do have some residents that put them out, leave them out for all the time, week at a time. You can't, I mean, we don't, we know you have to have your garbage picked up, but if you can at least, you know, make a little spot, uh, and put them out of the roadway, it's a lot, a lot more helpful than, uh, than us having to push them over and you got garbage all over or whatever it may be, so. It would, uh, it would be, it would be very helpful if you could just keep in mind when you put your trash cans out, try not to put them in the, in the, especially if you know if there's a storm. I mean, if it's not a storm, it's not so bad, obviously. But, uh, when we, we're gonna have snow, we have to go through, we'll use the plow truck or the sidewalk machine, please be considerate enough to, uh, just to keep the cans off the edge of the roadway. And, and do pull them back, cause it is, it is in Village Cold, we're not supposed to be left out there. Thank you. No, yeah, it is, it's true. And even, even not so much this time of year, but in the summertime of the year, a lot of times you leave them out, and when the wind, you've got either they're either blown and tipped over the road or the trash is scattered all over, so. I mean, I don't like that kids at home, when it blows, it tipped over, so. But those things that you would help out us as well as help yourself if you could just, uh, um, maybe. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Any questions for Mike?
Yeah, I do have one purchase, do you? Yeah, it's once, you got down here in the bottom of your report too about the backhoe replacement thumb. That's this right here.
Yeah.
So, you can see the piece that's needed is number nine, it's circled on your sheet. Um, this last water break we have over here, we were on the side hill, but the, I don't know if the, that thumb bracket is welded onto the thumb, that was, uh, they had welded it on with the machine. The weld is broke and the bracket is twisted, so when the thumb comes down, it doesn't come down square, it comes down at an angle. I don't know if the weld was broke. Had gotten broken previous to this water main break or not, if it happened then, it was, it was cold, but, uh, what I noticed is we had a big section of curbing, like a ten-foot piece of curbing we took out, and it slid in the back when it did, the thumb twisted, and that's when I noticed it, so. There's no real way to straighten it to get it right. It's never gonna be right without changing that bracket. Yeah, I called a company that we've got it from and they said I have to go to the, I have to go to the case dealer, I can't buy it direct. So I did get a price from Case where we got the backhoe from. I mean, if you want another quote, I'll try to find another dealer farther away and try to get a quote from them as well. But it, it only comes from one, one supplier, they're the ones that make it. But they would not let me buy it direct. Uh, three or four weekly time to get it, so. So you need to get it ordered sooner than later, cause it, it is something you need. Something we use. Yeah. And then when we get it, we're gonna have to get it put on, um, which are probably gonna get done locally, because if we have to send it to them, you're gonna have to spend another thousand dollars in trucking to bring our backhoe to Colchester and then bring it back, you take two tracks, two trips of trailer, so. We'll have, we'll get it put on somewhere close by.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Okay. Questions about this? It's essential.
Nope. Yeah, no one will look at it. So can we, can we approve up to this amount? So if he's ready to order, if he gets another quote, and it ends up lower, he can use a lower amount?
Yes, cause we really should have two quotes.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand that's the only place to buy, but technically we're supposed to have two quotes.
No, I will.
So, yeah, so I make a motion to approve up to one thousand three hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents for this purchase, with an understanding of getting a second quote.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Alright. Is that it, Mike?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you. Correspondents?
Correspondents from Coors Officer Tatro to Matt Lachlan, um, JCO monthly report, and the correspondence from Officer Tatro to Matt Lachlan.
And has he heard anything from him? The last one went out?
Oh, he did.
Actually, I think he was there today.
He spoke with him today. He spoke with Mike Tatro today.
Do you know what happened?
He amended his building permits.
Oh, good.
As it should be.
Okay, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, see if he was here, you had that updated information.
He shared it with Mary, he shared it with us.
I did see him there today, but it was almost hit me, he was flying in, and then I seen nippy phones, then who it was and who it was.
Okay. Yeah, alright. Alright, under new business, we have several resolutions. Do these all have to be written to the record? Probably?
I think we do.
Alright. Okay, make sure I've got the right ones here. So, resolution number one, twenty twenty, Villager Champlain Village Board. Designating Village Mayor or Deputy Mayor to execute the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Engineering Planning Grant Agreement for the preliminary engineering report for wastewater treatment facility disinfection study. Whereas the Villager Champlain, work, as the Villager Champlain submitted a consolidated funding application for a wastewater engineering study, and whereas the project has been selected to receive an engineering planning grant up to twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars through the New York Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. Whereas certain agreements, contracts, and other documents are required to be executed by the village in order to secure the EPG funds, and now therefore be it resolved that the village mayor or deputy mayor is authorized to execute a grant agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and any and all other contracts, documents, and instruments necessary to bring about the project and to fulfill the Villager Champlain's obligations under the engineering, engineering planning grant agreement. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take place immediately. The question of adoption, the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote, and upon roll call vote, the vote was as follows. Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee, uh, Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Uh, the foregoing resolution was therefore duly, declared duly adopted. Resolution number two of twenty twenty, Village, of Champlain Village Board Authorization and Appropriation of Local Match for the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Engineering Planning Grant for the preliminary engineering report for wastewater treatment, uh, facility disinfection study.
Too long, the title.
It is. Whereas the village has been notified of the award of twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars engineering planning grant by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for a wastewater engineering study, and whereas NYSEFC requires a twenty percent local match of the total grant amount, and whereas the total fee for the scope of service proposed, uh, proposed by Barton and LeJudas DPC, the village's consulting engineer, the village's consulting engineer for preparing the requisite preliminary engineering report is twenty four thousand nine hundred. And whereas the local match for this grant is four thousand one hundred and fifty, which the village will pay through the general fund or sewer fund or in-kind services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Villager Champlain authorizes and appropriates a minimum of twenty percent local match as required by the engineering planning grant program for the wastewater treatment plant improvements project. Under the engineering planning grant program, this local match must be at least twenty percent of the grant award of twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty. The source of a local match in any amount in excess of the required match shall be from the general fund, sewer fund and or in-kind services. The maximum local share appropriated, subject to any changes agreed to by the Villager Champlain Board of Members, shall not exceed four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars based upon a total est- estimated maximum project cost of twenty four thousand nine hundred dollars. The village board of the Villager Champlain may increase this local match through the use of in-kind services if necessary. Uh, the question of adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote and upon roll call vote, the vote was as followed, roll call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Petrich.
Aye.
Resolution number three of twenty twenty, Villager Champlain Village Board. Determination that the proposed wastewater treatment facility disinfection study is a type-two action under Seeker and will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Whereas the village has been notified of the award of an engineering planning grant by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for a wastewater engineering study and whereas pursuant to Article eight of the Environmental Conservation Law, as amended, the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, Seeker and the implementing regulations at six NYCRR, part three one seven, the regulations. The village desires to comply with Seeker and the regulations with respect to the project and whereas six NYCRR, section six one seven point five, Title six of the New York Code of Rules and Regulations, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, provides that certain actions identified in subdivision C of that section are not subject to environmental review under the Environmental Conservation Law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Villager Champlain hereby determines that the proposed engineering report for the wastewater treatment plant improvements project slash evaluation is a type-two action in accordance with six NYCRR, section six one seven point five C, parentheses twenty-seven, which constitutes the conduction of concurrent environmental engineering, economic feasibility and other studies and preliminary planning and budgetary processes necessary for the formulation of a proposal for action and is therefore not subject to review under six NYCRR, part six one seven. The question of adoption of the foregoing resolution was put to a vote and upon roll call vote, the vote was as follows, roll call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Petrich.
Aye.
And the other resolution. Just a little background on it, NICOM is recommending that towns and villages pass this resolution to encourage the state to make some changes to their new criminal justice reforms that they just passed in January. So this is what they recommended and I'm hoping you all took the time to read it, so you know what we're discussing here. But there are some important changes, I personally, I think that we need, need to be made to this law.
That's for sure.
Okay, this is a long one. Resolution of the Villager Champlain requesting amendments to New York State's criminal justice reforms. Whereas while there was a need to reform New York's criminal justice statutes during the twenty eighteen state legislative session, it is widely recognized that several of the drastic changes in the law pertaining to discovery are overly broad and vague and are having unintended consequences at the municipal level. And whereas the dramatically shortened time period in which prosecutors must disclose evidence to defendants and the broad expansion of the matters to which such discovery mandates apply will have significant cost, tax and justice implications for cities and villages with police departments, local justice courts or code slash parking enforcement departments and whereas the discovery reforms mandate prosecutors disclose evidence to the defense within fifteen days of arraignment for criminal charges, even if the defendant is not in custody. And whereas drastically enlarging the scope of material that a prosecutor must review and deliver within fifteen days will overwhelm the ability of city and village officials and employees to prosecute cases while managing their misdemeanor and felony caseloads and will make it impossible to prosecute vehicle and traffic and local code infractions and violations in compliance with the new discovery mandates. And whereas arraignment must now take place within twenty days of desk appearance ticket issuance, thereby requiring justice courts, many of which can be monthly, to meet more frequently. And whereas cities and villages will not reap savings from the bail reforms, reduction on the burden of county jails. And whereas municipalities are already challenged with operating within the now permanent two percent tax cap and have not received an increase in general purpose state aid in eleven years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Villager Champlain supports the following set of amendments proposed by the New York State Conference of Mayors that are consistent with the intent of the criminal justice reforms, but which will allow for more effective and affordable implementation. Ensure that cities and villages are provided with additional financial and operational support to offset the costs of these mandated measures. Allow sixty days for prosecutors to disclose evidence to the defense for criminal charges. Exclude from the accelerated discovery requirements any charge not involving a misdemeanor or felony. Adjust the twenty-day arraignment requirement to accommodate local courts that meet on a monthly basis. Allow prosecutors to withhold sensitive information such as victim contact information without having to obtain a court order. And be it further resolved that this duly adopted resolution of the Villager Champlain be forwarded to Governor Andrew Cuomo, Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart Cousins, Assembly Speaker Carl Heasty, Senator Betty Little and Assembly Member Billy Jones, the New York State Conference of Mayors and local media outlets. Okay, so we need a roll call on that? Probably, yes.
I would say so.
I have to think so, all right.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett. Mayor Petrich.
Aye.
The USD, the USDA grant loan for the snowplow, I talked about it a little bit earlier. I just want to give you a bit more information about it. I'm working with a woman named Renee out of Canton. We had a long phone conversation three days ago. I've actually, I've actually first applied for this back in the summer. I sent a packet of hard, a hard copy and we've been going round and round, but I think we're finally on the right wavelength here. I resubmitted all of the forms Friday during that snowstorm. The cost of the plow, the, the cost that Mike came up with are, it's about a hundred ninety thousand dollars approximately. Um, we have a hundred and twenty thousand in reserves. According to Renee, we will not get a grant unless we apply for a grant and a loan. Before I had applied for grant only, so we are going to go ahead and apply for a grant slash loan um of seventy-four thousand dollars. That's the, that's what's on the application, that we're going to ask for a grant slash loan of seventy-four thousand dollars. She was clear that we just would not be funded if we went for grant only, she said it won't happen. So Juanita and I have talked a little bit about the idea of a bond and then I asked, I'm gonna turn it over to her and she's going to explain better what we were thinking about.
Okay, so in the scheme of things of talking about getting a snowplow, we also have our equipment that is out in the elements and that's the whole reasoning. Now we need all the batteries and some don't start and so we also need a cover building, whatever type of building.
Feel free to weigh in, like, here's Mike and I've been talking about this too.
Basically with holebar, you know, with tin.
Yeah.
There's some that has lights and some outlets in it, looking at equipment or chargers or.
Some on that floor would be nice.
So we will look at the cost of building one of those, I don't know, forty, fifty thousand?
I have to get prices.
I mean, just, just rough figures. So if we're gonna go for a bond, which is usually five years renewable, um, it's paid over a five-year period. So we were thinking that we could do the, whatever else it's gonna cost us for the snowplow, which is one ninety to one, so it's seventy thousand. Add on another fifty thousand, so take a bond out for one twenty-five.
And let me just add that we probably will be getting a grant, so the snowplow would not be taking up. We wouldn't need seventy-four thousand for the snowplow, let's say we get, she's going to try to get us fifty thousand. I think we're more likely to get thirty. So that would give us another forty-four thousand if we had a loan taken out or a bond taken out for seventy-four. Uh, plus whatever additional.
Whatever, plus we would add the cost of a building into that too. Um, we, you know, like we did with our water bond. How fast we got that paid, we paid a regular payment, plus we paid regular, an extra payment because the interest. We can do the same thing, get it paid earlier.
If we did, I would be recommending that we pay it off as fast as possible.
Mm-hmm, so I'm not asking for any decisions, but I think it's something we need to think about because our equipment is just wearing out and rusting out and the weather's too hard on it.
Percent to it.
Yeah.
You got a location. Possibly a water plant.
The water plant.
But this is something we could do, you know, do in, in one.
Where would you, where are you gonna put your snow?
I don't think there's one here.
Just enough in the parking, right now everything is parked in, kinda neighbors.
Um, we can pay, we can pay a loan off early, this USDA thing. And if we took, if we took it out for seventy-four thousand and we got fifty thousand for our grant, so we're left with twenty-four, we probably could pay that off early. But if we wanna, but if we wanna think about this building that I think we need, then that, this might be the time to add that to it and just have a plan, we've got, my feeling is we need some long, long-term, three to five-year planning here anyway. And this is one of the things that's come up consistently is something to protect our equipment.
Can we pull any money out of our savings towards this?
I'm sure we could.
Yes, I'm sure we could.
What's the cost of getting the bond?
Um, I'm not really sure, probably gonna cost you a couple thousand dollars, you have to go through bond council, that's unfortunately.
So basically, we're gonna have to go that route in order to.
So, so if we're gonna do it, we might as well.
But if we could do that and then pull our money out of savings to pay it off, so we're not paying all the interest, so.
That's right.
That's what we're.
Correct, I'm sure that's what we could do.
You kind of budget and then at the end of, when you come, the end of the, you know, when it comes time to pay, we have extra money, then okay, we're gonna make an extra payment, we're gonna take it out of our savings because we have money in there.
What is the interest of the bond charges?
Don't know, you have to go out, you have to go out to, you have to call three different, um, each three different banks, then they render you what they, what their quotes are. Then that all goes out to bond council, they send you back their recommendation.
They're requiring you have to get a bond to get a grant.
I know.
Like you can't just go to the bank and fill out a loan.
I know, but on the other hand, if we can't get the grant, that's, that's, thirty thousand's a lot of money.
I know.
I know, I don't wanna pick it up, but I'm not saying that, I just.
And if we don't wanna do the building idea now, we need to make a plan to do, to, we need to make a plan for this. We really need to start setting money aside and plan it for two or three years from now, but we need a plan.
Yeah, I mean, you can't hurry to, you know, the one-up charge, put it all in one for now. And then, as she said, like we did before, we've got the extra money, then we put it down. All that savings, make extra payments.
I say, I say, well, save it, but pay it off, whatever we do.
Yeah.
Just pay it off, save the interest.
So I should know more about the, the, the grant and loan next month, then I'll have more to tell you. But I did want, I want that idea out there because we are going, we're working on the budget, we are. We, we do wanna do some projections. Okay, any other questions about that?
Nope.
I think all of you got a notification about the sexual harassment training. I just remind you to let Mary go with, know which session you want to go to.
I know.
Uh, which session you will attend. Another little note is, we really need a new vacuum here. Hours does not work very well. So a good, a good commercial vacuum is probably going to run four hundred maybe?
Higher.
Five hundred?
I think we spent.
For commercial?
Well, we, we looked some up and they were like four hundred, but I'm sure we can get one that's more expensive, do you feel like one?
No, just get a rating on it, whatever you do, go to, to, what is it, Consumer Reports and get a rating on the vacuums. Because vacuums stink. They're horrible, you just go through them like.
I know.
I mean, St. Mary's, we bought a vacuum every darn year, you couldn't get one that worked.
All right, well, we definitely need one. They're having a really hard time vacuuming, it's, it's tough in here, we've got, you've got sand and salt and a lot of traffic and little pebbles and dust and dirt.
And those are brutal on vacuums.
Yeah, it's very, very hard, but we definitely need one, I don't know if you wanna approve up to a certain amount. Uh, I don't wanna wait till next month to buy this vacuum.
Where is it gonna come out of?
Building.
How much we got in there?
Buildings, equipment, buildings contractual, A sixteen twenty point four, we have just about twelve hundred dollars.
And it's gonna take half of that at least to buy.
Probably two-thirds of it.
How old's the current vacuum? Anybody know?
Oh gosh, I don't even know.
The current vacuum?
Yeah.
Maybe a year.
What did we get?
What was it, yeah?
It's a Bissell, just a upright.
One, one before, that was a Dyson.
Yeah. I mean, you're almost better off not spending a lot because you're gonna replace them every year, no matter what.
So maybe you wanna go with my four hundred dollar one.
So.
I mean, there is money in buildings that we can take it.
Yeah, what was the four hundred dollar one?
Um, I think it was a Bissell commercial, does anyone have Consumer Report membership?
No.
Okay, I'll look.
We just, we just purchased a shark.
We just purchased a shark and I love it, but I mean, it's.
I have a shark too.
It does one heck of a job.
It's amazing.
Finds more of Abby's dog for me, I knew she had one.
Every Friday, I'll go to Tom, Tom will work. Friday.
Could, yeah, once, yeah, once a week, could you come check yours out here?
My Fridays, you come on Fridays.
Do a test, I make a motion to approve up to seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, after the review of an options.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Tom. Any other discussion on that?
That's a number I had in my head too.
And then Amy, you'll, you'll, you'll just call.
I'll go with right now.
Yeah, oh, okay, I was gonna say, would you, would you just call us maybe tomorrow?
Yes, all right.
Roll call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Petrich.
Aye.
All right, old business, uh, contamination cleanup, I have nothing to report. I don't, Mike, have you heard anything?
No.
No, the snowplow, we already talked about. I would like to schedule a budget meeting on the twenty-fourth of February. A budget workshop. Are you available?
Fourteen.
It's.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Twenty Monday.
It'd be, uh, two weeks.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
I'm back, yes.
You're back?
Yeah.
What about the rest of you?
We're back.
Can you do it?
What time?
Six or six thirty, whatever works.
It's getting earlier, I'm getting old.
Yeah.
I'm good with six.
Yeah.
Six, okay?
Yeah.
You're coming.
Six. Six P M. All right.
Doesn't cut into bedtime.
All right.
We're gonna start working on it and then we can always send out whatever we're.
That's what we'll do.
Whatever we're up to at that point.
Okay.
We've been doing a lot of talking, we're gonna get together this week and work on it and then we'll send it out. And then you can.
Um, is everybody have to update their emails because of Prime Link? Is there someone still on Prime Link?
Oh, I'm still on Prime Link, but I'll.
Followed here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we don't. No.
The business isn't going away, just.
Just residential.
Yeah.
Residential.
Just get a Gmail, that's easy.
Or, yeah, one or the other. Any other about it?
Sorry, if there's nothing else, I'll.
I made a motion. Get your address book out, that's the problem.
Okay, Tom has one thing.
One more quick thing for Mike, I, I should've asked this when I was talking about the water board. Uh, the board would like a tour of the water plant at some point.
We don't water boards.
We could do that, yeah, you know.
We don't do it.
Shh.
Um, could we?
It's cool up there.
We gotta clean it up.
Maybe, uh, late February, early March, maybe we can get it cleaned up.
Okay. So I wanna give you a heads up. I think it'd be very useful for everybody on that board to, myself included, to have a better handle on what we're looking at and what the guy expenses, what are the details.
Yeah.
Why does it need to get cleaned that pile off, do you guys say?
No, it's, we got, I mean, we got, we got tubings to change, I've got a bunch of stuff that needs to be cleaned up.
Some things that need getting done.
You think the first part of March maybe? Whatever, yeah, I mean, I got fittings, I got some fittings here for that, I'm gonna change all the tubings and, you know, some of the pumps over time drip and it, you know, dries white, looks terrible.
Okay.
I make sure it's a good journey.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Home favor?
Hi.
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 Okay.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks for all the plowing. I'm waiting, I'm waiting, I'm giving you your money.